Call the meeting to order the Georgetown City Council. Could we please rise for a moment of silence and then Ms. Sames will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you ma'am. Madam Clerk would you please call the roll?
Mr. Lesby? Mr. McEwen? Mr. Penn?
Here.
Mrs. Tingle Sames?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mr. Singer?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Thank you ma'am, we do have a quorum. Next order of business is approval of the minutes of our October 27th meeting. Entertaining motion?
Motion Mayor.
Motion with Ms. Tackett.
Second.
Second, Mr. Penn. Any question about the minutes? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both? Thank you. See a show of hands that you did receive your check register this time? Thank you. Public comments? Four-minute time limit. Mr. Quick, you can lead us off.
Mr. Mayor, Council, just coming for you tonight to ask for permission to hold our Christmas Downtown event. I apologize for that coming in so late to the packet, that was my fault, not Tracy's. But we'd want to have courthouse square closed basically most of the day from 8:00 AM in the morning until about 10:00 PM at night. That's to allow for vendors to come in and set up and stand as workshop and then have the regular parade route closed for the parade at 6:00 PM, which shouldn't last more than about an hour.
Need a motion?
Any questions?
Make a motion.
I'd appreciate it.
Discussion?
Unless there was any discussion or questions.
Alright. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both?
Thank you very much.
Good day. And Ms. Stevens? Welcome.
I'm coming here as a representative of Lemons Mill Elementary, Anne Mason Elementary, Royal Spring Middle School, and Northern Elementary. Last year, you may remember, we held the first Schoolhouse Champions 5K. It was a 5K run that we put together to kind of give some recognition to our schools and also be a public health event for our kids and our families. We had, we expected 300, we had 429 registered runners for that event. So we really exceeded our expectations and we want to have that same event again this year. And last year, we had the three schools, the two elementaries and the middle school, but this year we're adding Northern. They would like to participate as well. So we would like to have that again on April 25th, 5:00 to 7:00, the regular route there in Georgetown College. And, any question?
You're early, that's great.
I believe in pre-planning.
Most of the day.
No, she, by Ms. Tackett?
Second.
Second by Marvin. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both? Have another good one.
Thank you, we will.
Okay, I have one item only tonight. Well, two items really. Call your attention to what's going on on the corner behind us down here. We're finally getting around to getting that cleared off and I think it's going to be much, much better than that without a doubt. And second item I have is, as in the past, the second meeting in December. This year it's going to be on Monday, of course, the 22nd, and we've always canceled that meeting. It's in the holiday season and it gives people time to get out more and it's just something that's always been done and I'd like to see feedback from the council if you have any problem with that taking place again this year in the holiday season.
You need a motion or?
We'll do it by motion by Marvin.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sames. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both? Good. Building inspection, municipal order approving the purchase of a four-door, four-wheel-drive Ford Escapade. Assuming that's in the budget?
Fill-in for them. This was planned asset purchase in the budget, so they're just coming to you for that.
Discussion?
Motion.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both? Second reading ordinance regarding the Board of Appeals sponsored by Ms. Tackett.
An ordinance regarding Code of Appeals Board. Summary. One, amend Section 4 through 6 of the Georgetown Code of Ordinances to provide an administrative appeals board comprised of five members to hear appeals related to enforcement of the property maintenance, nuisance, illicit discharge, and fire safety codes. Establishes terms for members. Two, create Section 4 through 7 of the Georgetown Code of Ordinances to provide a building inspection appeals board comprised of five statutorily qualified members to hear appeals of actions of the building inspector. Establishes terms for members. Three, provides for severability of provisions and an effective date upon passage and publication. Publicly induced and read for the first time October 27th, 2014. Publicly read second time November 10th, 2014.
Motion?
Motion Mayor.
Okay. Have a second?
Second.
Singer? Second reading ordinance, roll call vote please.
This is statutorily qualified members, we've covered this before, but they're members of the building trades.
Yep. Electricians, builders, architects.
What is that? Is there, does that mean they have like a state license in one of the trades?
No, it just says, "In the building industry," I believe it says. It's not, it doesn't get that specific, but I think you could make an easy argument that they have to be actively involved in that trade.
That's what we'll be looking for.
They don't have to be licensed, like a general contractor in my mind would qualify.
Okay.
Any comments? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mr. McEwen? Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mrs. Tingle Sames?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, next item, resolution approving an EMA under local agreement.
Anybody have any questions about this? I apologize, it slipped off my radar, but we approved this back in July, I believe, in the inter-local committee. It's gone through the rounds, been reviewed by the city and the county and the folks at EMA and they're here in support. If you all have any questions, I'm-
This is a four-way agreement, isn't it? Between Sadieville, Stanleyburg, Georgetown, and Scott County?
Not this one, no.
Should it not be?
Yeah, you've got a round.
That's a good question.
Yeah, it should be because if all agencies use the EMA, EMA, it should be a four-county, I mean-
Well, I guess the question is, are all of those agencies involved?
Well, they have to be.
Well, therein lies one of the famous objections to it. Well, I mean, by statute, a city, I think, has to have an emergency management officer that has, you know, that's the keeper, the custodian of the plan. So, I mean, Sadieville and Stanleyburg, unless they have their own officer or they're funding it themselves, which I really doubt, they need to be signatory.
Well, I don't, I don't see any reason why we couldn't approve it with the addition of those parties and if those parties have any problems, we can come back. Anybody have an objection to that? I'm not sure how-
Yeah, I do, I think you should, I think you-
You think you should go ahead and-
I think you need to get the two parties to see what part they're going to play in with it, but I know every, every city or every, has to have an agreement with somebody to be EMA, so I'm sure they have an agreement with them to be it. And then, of course, does that change the funding mechanism? I know neither one of them have much of any funding to participate with it, but, I mean, I really think you need to get them on board to see how they're going to line up with it before we go ahead and approve it.
Fair enough, fair enough.
They, because they can name their own agent or office.
Yeah, I kind, that's kind of how I figure that they will do, is they will just simply name EMA as their agent. The funding question, I don't know, that's a-
Yeah, there may not be anything to the funding question, but they're going to be-
Alright, that's fair.
It wasn't trying to win much share funding on it, but there, there needs to, I think, put their names on the documents we're going to through the document.
Alright, well, I'll get with the city attorneys for both and see if we can't work that out and then bring it back.
Very good.
Perfect.
First reading of a bond ordinance refinancing the 2009 variable rate debt sponsored by Mr. Lesby, Mr. Singer, and Ms. Tackett.
The finance committee met on October 27th and, so yes, there was a little bit of a quick turnaround on this, but we'd been saying that once the bond sale and everything was finalized on the police department, we wanted to take a look at our variable rate debt. This is a little bit of an, almost an insurance against the future. Right now, the variable rates are great, they're below 1%, so it's been very good to us, but we knew that there would come a time we would need to look at it and this is kind of hedging against those variable rates spiking. We are on a weekly rate, which means those rates can change every week. And so from one month to the next, our payment could drastically change. Like I said, we met, discussed this. We are looking at refinancing, basically the 2009 refinancing, the large point, the, it's a little over 8 million. See, as of the end of this month, it's around 8.494 million in leaving the Business Park and Aquatic Center portions, variable rate. So that's what we're looking at right now. We have Ross Sinclair and Associates, our fiscal agent here, so I'm going to let them come up and talk to you a little bit about it because we did rely heavily on their advice when we met in the finance committee about why the timing is good to go ahead and do this.
Thank you Stacy. I'm Joe Lukovka with Ross Sinclair and I have Brian Skinner with me. So as Stacy mentioned, we're going to look to lock in roughly eight and a half million of that variable rate debt. So you have a total of 11 million in variable rate debt for a city your size, that's quite a bit of exposure to interest rate changes. So it's been very good for you and you've saved just a ton of money for the last five, 10 years on that. Where we are with fixed rates now, it's just a very good time to lock that in and take that risk off the table. The police station came in for a 20-year rate at 2.99%, so just below 3 locked in for 20 years. So that was a fabulous rate. In fact, we look back and over the last 12 months, we did 91 bond issues ranging from 2.99. These are all competitive bond sales that the market determines the rate, but yours was the lowest of the 91 that came in and just kind of got lucky that way. They range from 2.99 to 3.94. So you were at 299 at the bottom of that. We're projecting right now, based on where rates are, that we could lock in this eight and a half million at about 3 and 1/4. So anytime you can do that, lock in at 3 or close to 3 for 20 years. We know that variable rate has been good and it's been around, on average, about 1% all-in. We know that KLC is restructuring that variable rate debt and we know that components of that variable rate debt are going up next year and we expect the interest rates to go up as well. So we think it's a good time to go ahead and lock that in before you're in and then in order to do that, we would need a first reading of an ordinance, which you should have a copy of that and then hopefully a second reading and we'd schedule a bond sale.
I think without a doubt, the variable rate has been very, very good to us, but in a recovering economy like we're having now, the variable rate is scary to me. So if we haven't, this is my take on it, if we have an opportunity to lock it in at the rate that he mentioned, then I think it's good for us to go with you. David, you-
Yeah, no, we've had countless meetings about this and, you know, I think in general, it's something that we've wanted to do, but we also realized that for each month that we wrote out that low interest rate-
Absolutely. It was good.
It was saving us a significant amount of money, but you get to the point that, you know, you realize something, something's going to change at some point. So, I mean, we've benefited greatly, literally it's saved us millions of dollars over the past several years, as Joe said, so.
Can you do for the council, at the finance meeting, you had, you had that sheet that had, of course now it's changed.
Okay. Make it into the packet.
The council, I think, needs that for, for next. I'll make sure you get that and I've also got here, before we finish discussing the, just the balance of our, of our current debt as well. Two things I wanted to emphasize, so you'll see this when I get this to you, but we did structure the first five fiscal years so that the debt payments would not be more than we're paying right now because of the investment, the incentive that we have coming up, so we wanted to make sure we could handle that. So with a fixed rate bond issue, you can structure your payments to be low those first five years so that we can make sure that's manageable and we can handle it in the budget. And also just wanted to reiterate that we are not extending the term. It was set to be finished in 2034. It will still be finished in 2034, so we have not extended the term of this by doing that. But I will make sure that you each have a copy of how the debt will be after this refinancing.
Is that an $8 million mark, is that all of our variable rate debt?
No, you will have roughly two and a half million left. So typically, the rating agencies do not like for you to have more than 20% of your debt in variable rate capacity and that'll put, put you below the 20% mark. And it's also, part of that debt is tied to the Business Park, so that way if you sell property, you can still prepay that in a long time. Because once we lock in the fixed rate debt, there's no prepayment for 10 years on that. So it gives you an opportunity, if you want to, you can, you can prepay some of that debt on the variable and it offsets your fixed rate costs. That level, I think, is a comfortable and manageable level, about two and a half million over your total roughly 16 million in debt.
And one thing we did talk about in the finance committee, because that was a decision that came out of the finance committee meeting to leave that portion variable, but also I mentioned on the Business Park, I'm going to be bringing a first reading of a budget amendment probably at the next meeting. And part of what I want to do is look at our fund balance, because we've had a couple of land sales in the last couple of years in the Business Park and to take that extra cash and put that towards the Business Park, but we need to get it into the budget so that we can pay that extra on the debt that we've received from those land sales.
Have we done dollar-for-dollar as far as paying down the debt, paying down the principal on the Business Park for every time we've sold property over the last-
That's what I want to look at. We've had two since I've been here and we have, in the two that we've done, we had, I think, a $75,000 sale and a $91,000, $92,000 sale. We use that to relieve the general fund rather than the general fund having to transfer money to cover the debt that year, but that still leaves $40,000 extra that we need to put in the budget to pay down on principal. And then I need to go back and look, prior to my arrival, was there anything sitting in the fund balance that had not been repaid?
Well, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to like try to, I don't want to try to put any sort of, like a stress on the budget trying to do the dollar-for-dollar immediately, but if we can put something in the ordinance as well, directs the council to, you know, over a timeframe to try to do a dollar-for-dollar application of that money on the land sales of the last two or three years and pay that down and target that toward that variable rate debt, I think that's what-
Yeah, that's what I want to do, is whatever extra we had left over, because like I said, we brought in more on those sales than the debt service was that year, so.
Yeah, I knew we had to pay, you know, we've had to pay, use capital to pay, you know, capital sales to pay off operating in some bad years, but if we can try to repair that situation, go back and do that, that'd be great.
We certainly have some potential activity at the Business Park. Of course, Jack's not deliberate to disclose any, anyone that he's talking to, but he feels pretty good about some property movement taking place there.
As their secret agent.
That would be great. Red Reed?
Stacy, what is the, you know, I know there's a little bit of controversy in the past several weeks about the debt. Can you go ahead for the record, tell us what that balance is when you take the police department into account as well?
Yes.
If you paint it off today, not, not the 15 or-
Right. The principal balance on the debt as of today is 16,396,522. And of course, we haven't made any principal payments on the police debt yet, so that's-
I went the interest added over the next.
So look at that over the, well, the, the variable day, the variable alone will be 15.3, that's what the estimate of the total new debt service will be over the next 20 years. 15,383,721 for all of our variable rate debts. And I don't have the schedule with me on the police department, so I can't tell you exactly what that is, but-
That's our debt outstanding and then what's our fund balance?
I'm sorry?
What's our current fund balance?
The fund balance is about 9.2 million. So almost half of our budget.
You can go over the last, maybe six years, if you just, I don't want to ask too much of you, but as far as their debt standing, starting in 2011 versus their fund balance standing and how that's changed and shifted over the last, say, five or six years?
Yeah, I can update that, because I'll leave, like I said, I'll leave this with you, I'll go ahead and give it to Mark here if you can start passing it around. This starts June 30, 2010, ending November 30th. And I just realized, I forgot to put the police department on there, so just add 5 million to all those numbers, but that does have our debt balances and how they've changed. And I can easily add a line on there to show how that compares to our fund balance at the end of each of those years. And I'll, I can email that out to you all. Any other questions for myself or Joe or Brian, since we have them here tonight?
Need to read?
At a meeting held on November 10th, 2014, the city of Georgetown, Kentucky gave, gave a reading to an ordinance entitled, ordinance number shall be named, "An Ordinance of the City of Georgetown, Kentucky Authorizing the Issuance of General Obligation Refunding Bonds, Series 2014B and the Aggregate Principal Amount of Approximately $8,715,000 Subject to a Permitted Adjustment Increasing or Decreasing the Size of Said Bonds Up to $875,000. For the Purpose of Currently Refunding the City's Outstanding Lease Agreements with the Kentucky League of Cities Funding Trust dated February 5th, 2009, Approving the Form of Bonds Authorizing and Directing the Filing of Notice with the State Local Debt Officer, Authorizing Designated Officers to Execute and Deliver the Bonds Providing for the Payment and Security of the Bonds Creating a Bond Payment Fund Maintaining the Heretofore Established Sinking Fund Authorizing the Acceptance of the Bid of the Bond Purchaser for the Purchase of the Bonds Authorizing Other Actions in Connection with the Issuance of the Bonds and the Plan of Refunding and Repealing Inconsistent Ordinances. This ordinance, the ordinance sets forth general rules, regulations, and conditions for the issuance of general obligation bonds by the City of Georgetown, Kentucky, the city. And the principal amount of $8,715,000, the bonds, subject to a permitted adjustment of purpose of refunding the city's outstanding lease agreement and the Kentucky League of Cities Funding Trust dated February 5th, 2009, and paying the cost of issuing the bond provisions are made for the authorization and issuance of the bonds, for the application of the proceeds of the bonds, for the establishment of bond payment fund, for the maintenance of the sinking fund, and for certain covenants of the city with respect to the bonds. The bonds are to be sold at public competitive sale in accordance with the provisions of KRS Chapter 424. The bonds pledge the full faith and credit of the city and provision is made for the collection of a tax to pay the principal of and interest on the bonds subject to certain credits as provided in Section 7 of the ordinance as required by KRS A3A.060. The following Section 7 of the ordinance is set forth in its entirety. Section 7, General Obligation. The bonds shall be full general obligations of the city and for the payment of said bonds and the interest thereon, the full faith, credit, and revenue of the city are hereby pledged for the prompt payment thereof during the period the bonds are outstanding, there shall be, and there hereby is levied on all the taxable property in the city in addition to all other taxes without limitation as to rate a direct tax annually in an amount sufficient to pay the principal of and interest on the bonds when and as due. It being hereby found and determined that current tax rates are within all applicable limitations. Said tax shall be and is hereby ordered, computed, certified, levied, and extended upon the tax duplicate and collected by the same officers in the same manner and at the same time that taxes for general purposes for each of said years are certified, extended, and collected. Said tax shall be placed before and in preference to all other items and for the full amount thereof provided however that in each year to the extent that the other lawfully available funds of the city are available for the payment of the bonds and are appropriated for such purpose. The amount of such direct tax upon all of the taxable property in the city shall be reduced by the amount of such other funds so available and appropriated. A copy of the ordinance and of the form of the documents in connection with the issuance of bonds are on file in the office of the city clerk, 100 Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky 40324.
Thank you guys, appreciate you being here, helping us out. Okay, Ms. Human resources? Municipal order approving renewal of dental insurance, Delta Dental?
I sent a memo to council on the 28th of October, just talking about the renewal that we got for dental insurance. Delta Dental came back with a 7% increase. We had budgeted for a 5% increase. The reason I think we saw this hefty increase this year is because to get our business back, last year they gave us a rate hold, so we experienced no increase in their rates last year. So what I had proposed in the memo was that we use part of our savings from the medical insurance to offset this increase in dental insurance so that the employees see no increase in their premiums. I was just seeking your permission for that to happen before we actually read the memo and approve this. It'll be for a total of $4,326.05.
Had no cost to her, no extra cost to the employees?
That would mean no extra cost to the employees. If council so decided that you'd prefer to save that money and pass it to the employees, then I can tell you what those rates will be or it's in your packet as well.
I think we could probably handle 4,000.
Okay. Alright, we'll do that. There's nothing to read.
Motion.
Motion?
Second.
And second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both? Okay, Megan.
Okay. For vision insurance, we got hit even worse. There was a 19% increase in our vision insurance. The reason that vision insurance does not affect our budget is because our employees pay in full for their vision insurance. So that does include some increases. For example, an employee only would pay 56 cents extra each paycheck. An employee with a spouse would pay a dollar three extra per paycheck. An employee with children would pay $2.04 extra and a full family would pay $1.61 extra. I was not coming to you tonight to ask for us to offset that in any way because we have not been contributing anything toward vision for employees. And one thing that we will make sure we promote heavily this year at open enrollment is that Bluegrass Family Health offers a vision package with their, the package that the employees get when they sign up for medical. So we'll just make sure that we highlight that to employees, in case anyone wants to drop their vision insurance, they will still have some under Bluegrass.
EGFA insurance, is it, does it include all the providers, like the local providers here in the city? Is it the same network as-
Their network is really good. Yeah. I mean, it's one of those things where we can show employees both the package that Bluegrass offers and the network that they offer and then let them make the decision as to whether or not they want to keep their extra vision insurance or drop it. But it's, it's not that big of an amount of money. I mean, the largest jump is the $2.04 per paycheck for the employees with children and I don't, I don't think the employees would suffer much by-
A little over $4 a month.
And vision, obviously, it's completely voluntary. You can take it, you cannot take it, whatever your choice is, but if you have medical insurance with us, you have some vision insurance.
Motion for approval?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both? First reading of a personnel ordinance to create two additional positions of police officer sponsored by Mr. McEwen and Mr. Penn.
Stacy gave me the two sheets from the budget packet that shows the approved two new police officer positions. There's a note at the bottom that explains that these positions will not begin until after December 14 and the ordinance has been written so that when read, it will indicate that it shall not take a- that it shall not take effect until January 1, 2015, and after you have passed and it's been published. So although we have done some work to identify who we would like to put into these positions, we will not make any moves on those positions until after January 1.
This was discussed at budget time, too. And it was stated there that we would not put this in effect until January.
Mayor, I want to mention something about this, just though it's not a surprise at the next meeting. It's, it's probably not something I'm going to support, and, um, I guess the primary reason is when we had the tangible tax issue, uh, I remember saying specifically, and it was just my opinion, that, that when you choose to lower a tax rate, and I, I think most, if not all of us, supported doing that, but we also knew that when you, when you do lower a tax rate and you reduce your revenue, that it's difficult to raise expenses at the same time. And when we did that, I specifically said that, that I think this council needs to look at each expense in the future, um, with this change. And this is, this is a perfect example of what I was talking about when that tangible tax did not pass. And that revenue from that tangible tax that was already in place would probably be enough to cover these two police officers. And probably not everybody agrees with me, but, uh, it's, it's a financial decision, and when we look at doing the budget in the upcoming year, I'll be glad to take another look at it. I may take a different approach on it. I look at the wonderful things that we've done for the police department, and, uh, in regards to the building, in regards to the pay increases, in regards to the, the vehicles, uh, communication devices, the radios, and, um, we've made monumental strides. And Mayor, I know you've, you've led the charge in that area, and, and you've had the support of this council. You've had the support of me. And, um, I'm not, I'm not being negative or critical. I'm, I'm just looking at this, uh, from a, trying to be a very fiscal, fiscally responsible decision. And I just feel like when we gave up the tangible tax, that it, it changed, it changed some things, and I think this is one of those things. And I understand the importance of the police officers. I do. And it's something I'd like to have, but we've got to look at the finances of the city at the exact same time. You've got to weigh those out. And somebody could argue opposite of this, and y'all may do that. You may choose to do that, and I respect that. But I'm just telling you where I'm coming from, so at the next meeting, there's no surprise.
Okay. Very good. Go ahead and read.
This isn't a budget amendment, so these are already in the budget.
They were already approved in the budget.
It's not, it's not an additional.
I, I understand that, but it will be an additional expense that we're not incurring at this moment. That's, that's the obvious. I mean, that's, that's where I'm coming from.
You know, I, I, I think we made a commitment to the police department when they came with their request during budget season, and we asked them to delay the hiring until after the 1st of the year, and they willingly did that. I, I think we've made a commitment to the police department. I think we need to, we need to stand by it.
Well.
Very good.
Yeah, I'll just.
There's no problem here. Not at all. It, I mean, you both made your, your feelings clear, and that's what you're supposed to do here.
Do we, Megan, do we know of any one that may be at the point of retiring or any of that kind of thing right now?
Do you, Chief? I certainly don't.
Not within the next year, I would.
Okay. Do you have all the positions, current positions? Are they all fielded?
Mayor and council, the other thing I'll say is, you know, I know when we pass the budget, this is something I do say each and every time, you know, none of us support everything that's in that budget. You know, we realize that many of those things, or most of those things, certainly expenditure items of any magnitude are going to come back to a meeting just like this. And at that time, we're going to have the opportunity to kind of express our thoughts. And a lot of things change from the time that you, that you do the budget, uh, to the time that that issue comes up, you know, later in that year or the following year. And, and in my mind, this is simply just one of those items.
Do we have, do we have an estimated expenditure for next year for these two officers?
Let me see if it's on that budget sheet.
And are we looking at hiring and training? Or are we looking at?
We were looking at one, um, officer that would need to be trained and one that is already certified. And it looks like the recurring expense, and there are some assumptions made here on their insurances, would be about $64,500 each.
Mayor, uh, just for clarification purposes, have you already started that process for those two individuals, those two positions that we're discussing right now?
It doesn't matter. I was just going to say, we are always in process. We're always trying to make sure that we have qualified candidates ready to go as soon as we have an opening. Just because as a tightly, or some may call understaffed department, we do try to make sure that we're ready, just in case someone does resign, retire, what have you, and we, we need to get someone in there. So we're constantly in process.
Have you, no commitments have been made to any individuals at this point?
None.
Okay, let's have first reading, please.
An ordinance amending Section 2-111 Subsection C of the Code of Ordinances to establish and remove certain positions. Summary. Amend Section 2-111 Subsection C of the Code of Ordinance, which sets forth the classifications associated pay grades and authorized positions for each department to increase the number of police officer to grade six positions from 37 to 39 within the police department. Two. Provides for repeal of inconsistent ordinances, severability of provisions on an effective date of January 1, 2015, and upon passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the city clerk's office, 100 North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324.
Okay, first reading.
If you don't mind, Mayor, I have one other thing I'd like to touch on with council. This just has to do with our, um, decision to move to, um, being partially self-insured versus fully insured. As we started putting the pencil to the paper to really iron out the details of this and set it up as we wanted it, we realized that there may be one piece of this that, um, I just need to make sure council is in full understanding of before we actually have the mayor, um, sign any documents. First and foremost, I want to say, we are, as I told you before, fully budgeted to become partially self-insured. We have everything covered there. If you'll take a look at the sheet that I laid on your seat, down on the lower left-hand side, it talks about subgroup contributions. What you have there is, um, the amount in medical premium that our five subgroups, which includes Parks and Rec, Planning and Zoning, Tourism, Chamber of Commerce, and Housing Authority, pay to be on the city's insurance. So that $344,874 was put in this amount when we decided to try and do our calculations to make sure we were budgeted adequately for this. So one thing I now need to make sure you understand is that groups the size of these are not supposed to be partially self-insured. They're not large enough. So what I mean by that, when we pay a small portion of money to have stop-loss coverage instead of paying a high premium to be fully insured, we are saving money. And because we have so many employees, we're saving a lot of money on premium. We can bank that money back to make sure that when we have a claim, a higher claim, that we're able to pay it. I think you can all deduct from that, if you have a small group, like, uh, Chamber of Commerce only has two employees, they're not able to save enough money to be ready to be hit with a $75,000 claim like our specific stop-loss is set to. So that is why that group is included in this proposal. They've been in this proposal the whole time. I'm just not sure I called your attention to that enough and wanted to do so today. So what will happen here is, instead of our subgroups paying the small premium for stop-loss insurance, our plan was to have them to continue to pay the full premium they were paying last year. I had indicated to them that they should budget for that plus 10%, so they're adequately budgeted. And what we will do with that money is use it to offset the claims that we will pay on their behalf. So, once again, we fully have enough money to handle this throughout the year. But I want to make sure you know, those subgroups are in our group, and their claims will be paid out of our account, just like our own employees will.
Wait a minute. They're going to be paid out of our account? So if someone at the Housing Authority has, they're paid, if the regular things go through, okay. Let's say somebody at the Housing Authority has, uh, a million, million and a half claim on some tragic, tragic event in their life. How does that affect our group?
Uh, we would be paying the first $75,000 of that.
The city of Georgetown?
Yes.
With the city of Georgetown's money?
Some of the money is, yeah. Um, let's back up and talk about contingent premium for a minute. When we went on to the contingent premium plan, we set aside $220,000 to be able to reserve, just in case we hit the worst-case scenario. That was money that was set aside by the city, for the city. And although all the groups contributed to our success in that, we kept all that money. So in the same essence with this, if you look at the $344,874 that we're going to collect from them, if their claims exceed that, then yes, we have paid some amount of claims for those groups. If their claims are under that, let's just say that they go a year and they only have $300,000 in claims as a group, then we stand to keep the rest of that money in our account because we have been paying for them. It was, it was talked about that perhaps we should look at this on a six-month basis and determine how each group is running. We ran into a problem in that, in looking at the subgroups, when you're fully insured, you cannot look at a group smaller than 50 and break it down into who's having what claims because of HIPAA. Once we're partially self-insured, then we can break it down and look at each individual group. So within six months' time, I could come back to you and say, the Housing Authority is killing us with their claims. They have so many that are hitting near the $75,000 mark, or they're just having multiple catastrophic claims. Then it, at that point, could be council's decision to say, we're not certain we want to allow that group to stay on our plan because their medical loss ratio is so high. Be advised that because our group is 47 stronger because of those people, we do get lower rates on our own stop-loss coverage. So we are saving about $100,000 by having them on just to start with. And we do have their $344,874 from premium. If you add that all together, that's about $100,000 shy of what their worst year in the past three has been. So, you know, it goes to say that, again, there's risk and reward in all of it. By us keeping those groups on and paying the claims this way, we stand to reach a higher reward. But all of that risk, I think that prior to this meeting, everyone understood all of that risk was simply on only the city of Georgetown employees. It's all the employees on the plan. So that does include the subgroups.
What's the legal part of that, Andrew? Um, Housing Authority, we have to pay, let's say we have to pay out. What's the legal part of that where they're, they're a federal-funded and we're local tax? Or Chamber Commerce where it's completely a private-funded? And we're, I mean, isn't there some kind of issue, going to be a legal issue with that? Of using taxpayers' money in that? Now, I understand the part they're paying in, so, you know, we need to maybe separate that out for what they're overpaying. But if we have a claim to pay out, and that's federal money, we're local money, Chamber's no money, they're private, and we're paying, you can't pay, you can't pay.
And I don't know the answer.
I guess you better find out.
Yeah. I have the feeling that this has been answered before. I just don't know what the answer is. I think that, I mean, I agree, there are some issues with whether or not you would consider them, whether it's different than the city providing any other service, um, to these people. I mean, right now, we're giving them funding, and I don't know that, that is distinguishable from providing them with these benefits directly as an insurer, because that's what we're talking, we're really talking about being their insurance company in a sense. But, yeah, it's probably worth getting an official legal opinion. And I, I think the Department of Insurance probably needs to provide that, but.
That's a good question, but, of course, the more we have in our membership, the smaller our premium is going to be.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure that's why they were added to begin with, because they do make our group stronger. We get much deeper discounts because they're part of it. But I was just afraid, and from the look on your face, I, I know at least you're sitting here thinking, no, I, I was not certain of what you meant by that, so.
I mean, I like the ideal of us doing the partial self, self-insuring. I like that. But I would be much more comfortable if you would find out for sure that we're not doing anything with mixing, mixing the funds that may come back and cause problems.
I'll find out. My sense is that we, we probably do have that right as a municipality, but it is worth getting an absolute official opinion.
We've been doing it for some time now, haven't we?
Since I've been here.
Not exactly the same way.
Not in the same way.
Not exactly the same as this, but they've been on our group, but they've been paying a full insurance premium.
The idea they're on there, I mean, it does, it helps bring down, it helps bring down, but where we're talking, going a different route, they were pretty much, the insurance company was responsible for, they paid in this, whatever else, the insurance company was responsible. Now the insurance company's not. We are first, and then the insurance company, so.
I called two directors of these groups today, and I just explained the scenario to them again. Because I had, I had communicated with them several times just to let them know that we were thinking of making this change. We needed to know if they wanted to make the change with us. And I, I had this sinking feeling in my heart that perhaps they didn't fully understand it either. And, and so the scenario that went out today was, what if three of your employees go out to lunch together and all three of them are in a horrific car accident? And each of the three experienced claims over $100,000? Are you prepared to pay $75,000 times three as soon as that bill comes in? And that's when, you know, obviously eyebrows raise and start thinking, this, this could not be what we thought we could do. And, um, it was actually Stacy, when we were in the funding meeting and we started talking about how we were going to have the money drafted to pay for the claims, we said, well, you'll have to set us each up with an account. And then her eyes got big and said, are they really prepared to pay $75,000 at one time? Because that's where specific is set. And it got us all talking about it a lot, just to say, not sure everybody's aware of that.
So what Karen's talking about, would we, the city, be paying the $75,000 right now? Or would the Housing Authority be paying the $75,000?
The Housing Authority would be paying premiums to us, just like they paid in the past. So for example, like, a family plan on Plan One is $14,306.61 a month. So they will continue to pay those amounts to us per month. So we will start banking that. And then, yes, if one of their employees has a claim that totals $100,000, out of all those funds, including some of ours, we would be paying the $75,000.
We would be paying that?
We, it'll be in a, a city of Georgetown account where all these funds are drafted from.
Yeah, if they were to cover, if they put enough funds in to cover that 75, then it's kind of swatching out the money.
Right.
But if they don't have enough funds in there, because the Housing Authority probably has enough employees that they might be able to cover that.
They might come close.
Might come close to it. But some of the others that we're talking about, like the Chamber, for instance, they definitely couldn't, and that money would be the city of Georgetown taxpayers' money paying for those claims. Because the housing has the most. How many, how many employees they have currently?
I think they're around 15.
Around 15, and you said the, the Chamber has two?
Chamber has two, Tourism has three, and then we have Parks and Rec, I think, with about, hmm, maybe 20.
And Parks and Rec, that doesn't, that doesn't bother me quite as much because that is our.
Parks and Rec and Planning and Zoning are all part of ours.
It's an agency.
Yeah. So, but the other three could get that. I mean, I would just like for Andrew to find out for sure.
Are they currently, under the current system, paying their premiums directly to us?
No, they pay their premiums directly to the provider right now.
And that's the, that's the change that we're not, yeah, that we'll have to.
The change will be they pay it to us. We set aside to be able to use that money to pay their claims as they come in.
It's always going to be a bit of a problem either way because even in years where, say, their, their claims on average aren't going to be as high, aren't going to be as frequent as the claims of, like, the city itself, that money, that means that money in, that GHA employees are paying in are going to be flowing into the city of Georgetown, are going to be paid on claims, uh, for just regular city employees. So it's always going to be a bit of a problem and a bit of a legal question.
And the risk is there.
Something to take care of, yeah. And, you know, the good, the good thing about it that I keep going back to is the reward for us could be much higher because they're part of us. The risk is still way less than what we're budgeted for, so we're prepared for it. Understand the legality of whether or not we can use our taxpayers' money to pay in advance for some of their claims that they may not have banked in with us yet is something to check on. And then, aside from that, I just wanted to make sure, before we put anything in ink, that you guys are still prepared to go forward being partially self-insured, knowing this information.
And what about, like, what about the water company?
They are, they're on their own insurance.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, are they on BGFH, or, I mean, is it?
I don't know.
Is it a possibility of adding them into this pool at some time? Because if we've got the Chamber and GHA, I mean, it just stands to reason. I mean, are they on Bluegrass Family Health that you know?
The water company?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Well, might be something more worth looking into in the future.
The county's on Bluegrass Family Health. I mean, there's always the potential to add several groups together if everyone could agree on what they want the terms to be.
The real question is timing. Are we, because we're bumping up against open enrollment. Are we going to be able to go, let's assume I can get you a definite answer, by the 24th? Are we okay to approve it by then, or not?
By the 24th of November, getting a definite answer?
Have to get it December.
We're going to be having open enrollment next week. But no matter which plan we go with, the employees are seeing the exact same thing on their open enrollment. As I'd said before, it's just the way we pay our bills that's the difference. So we can proceed. So, we can proceed with open enrollment, get that answer, and then go forward from there. I still stand behind the fact that I think it's fully beneficial for us to be partially self-insured. I think that we should take a good, strong look at this after six months, when I'm able to tell you which agency's performing good versus bad. And obviously, all of us will have our good and bad years. So a six-month picture isn't going to be perfect, but it gives us the ability to say, like, let's just say we see it and the City of Georgetown's running at fifty percent medical loss ratio, they're running at a hundred and twenty percent. That tells us right there that we could probably do much better if we were completely on our own. Now, our broker has indicated that if for any reason, right now, anything happens that any of those groups need to leave us, that he will work diligently with them to fund them a group. But I was just hoping we wouldn't come to that at this point, at this late in the game.
Is it possible that we know to have, like, for instance, if it, if the Department of Insurance says, "Yeah, it's okay to pay for parks, but it's not okay to pay for anybody else." Is it possible to have the self-insured with just them and have everybody else funded in the normal way, or is it all or nothing? Is it...
Our plan is set up one-way. I've already asked if we could set the specific stop-loss lower for the smaller groups, and they won't do that. Everything in our plan has to be one-way.
Is it, in your research, are there entities out there, like multi-agency entities that have set up a self, partially self-insured pool amongst themselves?
Like a consortium?
Like, for example, like maybe Jefferson County with all the town, not townships. Ah, there's cities, I guess. Like Anchorage and Buesel and all that stuff up there, City of Louisville.
Yeah, there are counties that do that.
By the way, I mean, do you know if there's like an example out there of like a multi-city, multi-county, not multi-county, but multi-county, multi-city agency, multi-agency pool in itself? I mean, we're talking, looking like down the road, like even two years, right now we're talking about like a City of Georgetown pool with these little Chamber of Commerce and PNZ and Parks and Rec. But eventually, if we do, you know, approach the county and other agencies, I mean, it would be almost a separate, almost insurance pool, insurance company that would exist outside of the City of Georgetown. I mean, I guess it would be administered by us eventually. I mean, that seems to be kind of a general idea. If we start down the road...
Yeah. Yeah, um, if I understand what you're saying, I mean, if we all decided we wanted to pull together and take all the county employees, all the subgroups we already have in ourselves, and become a group of, I guess that would make us four-hundred and something, then we would receive deeper discounts on premium cost. And obviously, we'd all have to be on the same plan. The county is currently fully insured, not partially self-insured. But there's, there's lots of advantages to it. I know when I was working in the private industry, a lot of manufacturing facilities wanted to try to band together to get deeper discounts by having larger groups. And oddly enough, there were so many politics involved in it that it never happened while I was there. But I think it's something that a lot of people consider and would really love to do, and I think there are a lot of resource groups out there who try to get those groups together and talk about it and the benefits that can come from it.
Yeah, re, you know, your reinsurance premiums go down the more people you have in the pool.
Right.
We actually looked at that when I was here previously. We looked at joining with the county, and they pulled their, pulled their statistics or whatever that they'd had, and at the time, because they had an older working force and we had a younger one, they pulled against us. And so that's why we didn't, we didn't go that direction then.
Yep. Yep. A lot of it comes with your numbers, and as I've said multiple times, we're experiencing so much success with these costs because our numbers are good. And they've been good for the three years I've been here, and statistics show that you'll have a bad year every four to five. So, I kind of hold my breath in hoping that maybe that one happened right before I got here, but we're always on the lookout for it.
So we need to wait for Andrew to do his, call him and see where we are with this thing?
If for some reason, he makes that call to the Department of Insurance and they say, "You're perfectly fine to have all those groups on there," do you want me to just proceed as-is and let you guys know that via email, or do you want to wait for another council meeting to decide?
I think you probably need a decision like that. I think it's better to have it in a public, a public setting than just by email.
Okay, we'll bring it to you. All right. That's all I have. If you think of any questions, feel free to contact me. And what you do have from me most certainly is a commitment that if we keep them on our plan and we go as-is in this right now, we will watch it very closely, and at least every six months, if not every quarter, we'll talk about where we stand with people and how we're running. It'll be interesting numbers to see anyway.
So we're putting this on hold. Anyone else have anything to add?
The, the open enrollment period that starts next week, how, how long does that go?
It'll be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of next week.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
Three days?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if the only danger is the possibility, the legal, the legal question of whether or not it's okay to mingle, you know, City of Georgetown premiums with federal money at the GHA or private money with Chamber of Commerce. I mean, if that question is, is answered and settled and to Andrew's satisfaction and I guess the rest of council's satisfaction, I don't have a problem going forward. I mean, I think it's still a question of the more the merrier. I mean, we wouldn't have added the Chamber of Commerce people if we didn't think there was potential savings to the City of Georgetown by having a bigger pool, people entering the BGFH pool, so...
They definitely bring us discounts, and all we have to do is, once we're able to analyze their groups by being partially self-insured, take a look at who's hurting versus who is truly healthy.
I mean, I think this is a positive step, as far as moving to a self-insured pool partially. I think it's, you know, a step that down the road could yield great savings for local government, period. So, I mean, to my mind, the only question is, is it legal? I don't have a problem with, you know, the, the financial mechanism thereof.
Right.
That's all I have. Okay?
Okay. So, there's two different opinions about whether we bring it to another council meeting or just advise. Which one do you want me to go with?
To speak for everybody else, I'd, I'd like to sit, come back with counsel.
Counsel?
Well, at least I want the question answered.
Yeah. Okay. So we'll, we'll wait from having the mayor sign any documents until we've had the next council meeting and we bring you that information. Okay?
And as soon as he finds out the information, we'll, we'll get that out to you ahead of time, certainly, before we send out your next pack. Okay. Municipal order approving bid for turning targets on the firing range.
The sheriff's office is purchasing half of this, so you know, and...
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? I think this is great, just another way of...
Good cooperation.
Teaming up, cooperation, absolutely. I think it's outstanding, chief. Commend you on that. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah.
Are they the targets that, like, you shoot them and they turn? Is that what you're meaning?
No, they turn on command from the instructor and expose the target.
Make it harder to shoot.
incorporates decision-making with, with accuracy.
Oh, okay.
It's a moving target instead of a...
You don't know if it's a good guy or a bad guy until it turns.
Most of the targets are going to have a bit of movement.
Sand wheel, chief. Mark wants sand wheel.
Yeah.
There you go.
All the bad guys look like Mark.
I left a little hint there for on your, on your, on your account, in case you're interested in buying a, a paper.
Right, Dan?
Take it, chief. Council comments? What have you been hearing? What do we need to do?
Still trying to get those barriers off of Clay Avenue.
They're way out in the road. It's not like they're on the sideline.
They're, they're, they're six foot out.
Well, we'll check that out. Engineers here. Anything else?
Recycling.
Motion to adjourn.
I got, I got something real quick. Just real, real quick. Just to hit some...
Very quick.
Uh, I got an email over the weekend from Sophicity. They're implementing a pilot program for councils, and they want, they want us to be one of the pilot cities. They want to put tablets in, in the hands of every council member, and they're willing to offer a free trial period. Now, I'm going to assume that there's a cost to this. In the long run, we're going to probably purchase the tablets and keep up the maintenance. But before I tell them, "Yeah, send us a bunch of tablets," I want to get your all's feedback real quick. These are, these are top-of-the-line tablets. I know, because they sent me one. They're, they're full Windows eight-point-one, they do everything, they've got full Microsoft Office Suite on them, and, and the idea is they're connected, they're connected when you, when you're on, you have a connection to the internet, you will have a connection to the SharePoint server, which we have the ability to put files to, you have the ability to put files to, we can have publicly accessible documents or documents just for you all. It's, it's really a good thing.
After a trial period, it's, you know...
If we drop them, we damage them, who's liable for that?
Well, we'd be buying, we would have to buy them. We would have, we're not going to rent them, that would be pointless. But yes, we would, we would have the liability.
And so it's two years during the trial?
Yeah, I'm assuming we're going to be liable during the trial, too. If you drop it and dent it, they're not going to give us a free...
No, thank you, I don't want one.
I do have one.
Exactly.
I mean, yeah, I've been six years on council, I've never connected except through my own wireless device with my computer, which, which we're getting, we're getting to where that's going to be possible. I would be for it. I can't imagine I have more than three meetings left myself, but I think that, I would, I would be in favor of it.
Well, I will admit it, it is, I don't know when they plan on doing this pilot program, but it is until we get Wi-Fi in the building. A little bit premature.
We haven't done that yet. Be on Dan's, Dan's Wi-Fi.
Yeah, because what is, what would be the cost to, even though it's trial, what will be the cost to the city?
We'll be going over.
Well, it's a good idea. And it's a, you know, I understand their, their concept, they're trying to essentially sell us that product. It is something that I think that, that the Wi-Fi especially and the ability to access files and having, having everybody have an email address and a login, that I do agree with.
Can we not have an email address and a login from, from not, not having their equipment and having our own...
The main, yeah, the main, the main thing I would tell you, really big, is we need to, is we need to have a dedicated council email address for each member.
Okay, I'm glad you brought that up.
Because when you run into open records requests and all that stuff, you need to make sure it's only in one place.
They, that cost is extra. We pay for a set number of users. We have full users, and then we have email-only users. So, we are currently at our max of users. Everybody is taken, so... They told me what the cost was additionally per user, and I, I can't remember at this point, but I think it's worth it. You get along with that, you get the, the backup of your documents, the backup of your email. When we get an open records request, we hit a button, we can search all of it. It's all on our server, in other words. And you get the support behind that. If you ever do get a tablet and you want to have a log-on to the city's domain, you can have that. You can have, we can set you up with certain kinds of access. So I think that's an expense that's worth it, and I can get you a number on that.
You can give us a number on that, but can't you just, I learned this from previously about emails and being for open records, but, you know, so when I came back on council, I just set up a separate email that all the city stuff goes into that email. Can we not, aren't we protected under that? Because I thought that was my understanding, that you're protected under open records as long as you separate that email from your, from your private email.
You are not. If you are doing official city business, you are not protected. It is subject to open records.
Not my, not my personal email, the one that's set up for the city council email.
The truth is, if you are discussing city business, it's technically held subject to the Open Records Act. Doesn't matter what...
But on my personal email, I don't discuss city business.
Okay, well, sure.
That's why I set up a email for, that comes through for city council.
But the rest, you know, the council members do discuss city business on their email accounts, so...
Which, that, that's something that the councils should all set up their own personal, and it wouldn't cost a city, but if you set up your own, like a Gmail account. I have twenty Gmail accounts, that's why I never read any of my emails. So I...
Oh, my God.
That's me, too.
So I have a Gmail account that's just all the stuff that comes through for the city comes through Gmail.
Well, sure, but I, and I guess the point is, what if somebody requests all the emails sent to you by a certain person? Then we rely on that individual council member to say, "Yeah, I've got all that, I didn't delete all that."
What's the difference of having one that comes through the city, uh, city domain of Georgetown, and they say, "We want all that," and it's like, "Oh, well, Joe Blow, send me some on, on this email as well." There's no difference really in the technicality of things.
Well, that's the technicality, yes, but I think the practicality of it, I think there is. I think having things backed up and secure and, and easily searchable is a, it goes a long way when you're talking about open records, but...
I, I mean, I'm not going to try to sit here and say that every bit of council business could possibly run through one email, because I've got like different email accounts and I don't even know. I mean, it's like, I ain't got twenty. The phone, when people text me...
Do you rate them, though?
I'm not exactly what you call a miss, I'm a bit of a Luddite when it comes to technology, but the, but like, for example, text messages on my phone with somebody, oh, don't do that, I don't want my phone taken from me if like I get an open records request. But anyway, the, I'm not going to try to say that all of it could possibly be contained on one account, but it would be nice, as long as it, there's no cost to it. I don't know why it would cost me, I can set up an email. But it would be nice to be able to say, "Okay, all the city stuff, I'm going to try to funnel into this one account," starting at the inception. Of course, at this point, I've got six years of skeletons and buried bodies and the like in my email accounts. But maybe one of the three new ones.
But here's another thing. I mean, you get, you get council members that leave, and their old emails are still subject to open records. If somebody could submit a request for an email that I sent you a year ago, and I'm still required to honor it...
But that's just it, you're required to honor it through City Hall, not through...